You're watching Open Agenda. Here's our host, Joe White.
Welcome to Open Agenda. I'm your host, Joe White. In the studio with me today is Dr. Joe Venosa from Salisbury, Ms. Trish Melvin from Fruitland. Thank you for coming out. So you were out last night at the press conference held outside the government office building before the city council meeting and I guess in talking about the 287G MOU? What was the point of the press conference?
The intent was to raise awareness and we had groups from across Maryland, really. ACLU was represented, NAACP, as well as local coalitions, faith-based groups. And the intent was just to raise awareness for the citizens of Salisbury because Salisbury is considering joining with a county in this MOU with ICE.
Okay. And Joe, you were at the meeting. Did those feelings spill over into the city council meeting and work session?
I think so. I would say about maybe more than half of the folks who were at the press conference out on the steps came into the council chambers as well. And many people spoke at different points, yeah.
Well, I'd like to bring in Michael Langford because I want to talk specifically about the agenda items. And obviously, one of the items that did come up, at least through public comments, was the 287G. I'd like to bring you back in after Michael's here. And then I just want to get some more information about just what was said and where people think that the city is going with this.
Sounds good.
So stay with us. When we come back, we're going to bring in Michael Langford, talk about the city council agenda and any other comments that did come up last night. So stay with us. We'll be right back. Welcome back to Open Agenda. In the studio with us now is Mr. Michael Langford from Salisbury. Thank you for coming out. Dr. Venosa, thanks for sticking around.
Always.
You both were at the city council meeting yesterday, and there was a lot going on. Do we want to start with the protest out front about the 287G MOU?
Sure. So at about, I guess, 5:15, a local Wycomico Coalition for Human Rights, which includes several different groups, some political, some human rights staged a protest, basically in order to express their dissatisfaction and concern with the supposed agreement that may or may not be happening regarding ICE cooperation with the county with an MOU, and also specifically with a purported agreement between the city police department and the county and ICE.
Let's talk about where we do have an MOU, which is actually nowhere, right?
Correct.
Okay. So the county executive a month ago came out and said that she has an MOU with the sheriff of Wycomico County. But we've been tracking it. There is no application posted. There is no signed MOU. So there's no MOU?
No.
And now she's saying that there's not an MOU, but she expects one to be imminent.
Although we don't know the details about that yet either.
That's one of my big points last night in general. We have a lack of transparency. So like when we're talking about the MOU, why isn't there a document for us to peruse so that the public can engage with the material? We have the same issue with ordinances. It used to be that you could go on, get the agenda, the briefing packet, and then you could click on the ordinance and it would hyperlink to the document, right? They don't do that anymore since, you know, Deshaun Doughty took over as council president. So we've been seeing a lack of transparency that way. And we're also, same thing with the sub-recipient agreement with the developers. There isn't an actual plan. So there is some agreement, but I don't know the content of it. Again, like the MOU, all of these things kind of point to the same core issue, no transparency.
You spoke to this last night. You said, look, people are upset at the city council meeting about 287G.
Yeah. I wanted to address very quickly the issue of 287G. I would bet my life and everyone's life here, to be frank, that most of the people on this council don't actually know the details of the 287G program, regardless of how you feel about it, okay, whether you're in favor or not. And for the record, I'm not in favor of it. And there's many reasons for that. But part of the problem is that there is no communication occurring from the officials who need to be communicating. If council members are caught blindsided by it, I'm embarrassed for you because several private citizens knew this was coming and heard about it. So if you're elected officials and you don't know what's going on, I don't know what you're doing with our public trust. That's embarrassing. Secondly, because this is a county issue, if anybody here is concerned or in favor of 287G, regardless, you need to address your attention to the county executive office. And unfortunately, and I have to give the mayor credit on this one, you at least are here answering questions and taking criticism. The county executive, unless you're a donor, does not meet with any member of the public at all. So that needs to be understood. Send any email to county executive Julie Giordano. She is the authority who determines whether or not we have agreements. And she's given three or four different versions of that. She's had a pretty tough week, so she might not get to your emails ever. But that's the entity you need to address. So please, take that into consideration and do better, council. Thank you. Two things on that. One was that the mayor, I think, made a really, in my opinion, boneheaded miscalculation when he put out a press release saying that the city police department would work with the county and help with ICE on the MOU. But as we've all discussed, there is no agreement yet.
Okay.
So it kind of came across to me as a preemptive kind of political move. But of course, then the council upped him and did their own when they kind of, in my opinion, to some extent, grandstanded. And again, I want to be clear, I'm personally against the 287G agreement for many reasons. But I don't think anybody on that council actually knows anything about the agreement whatsoever because it doesn't exist. And they were kind of taking sort of very broad rhetorical potshots. The county council, excuse me, the city council president alluded to having conversations with people at the White House.
Now, if we arrest the person and take them to the jail, then they can check them for those warrants.
But that's all you gotta do anyway.
So let me provide some context.
No, let me finish. Hold on, let me finish. So let me give you an example. We pull someone over for a stoplight, for a headlight, okay? And this guy could be, you know, some sort of, you know, have multiple warrants out. We would not know that. And it's certainly not an arrestable offense to have a headlight out. My point is, is that it's another tool in the toolbox to try and hopefully make communities safer. You can disagree with that, but that's just, you know, basic police work.
So I think where, and this is where confusion came with, again, reading the release and then it appears, I mean, it says, "City of Salisbury intent to cooperate with Wycomico County on 287G program." That, I mean, it literally did. It brought some fear and some anger in people. So I think, and I just so happened to have had a meeting with some staff members from the White House. And I asked them, I just said, hey, I got this release. What happens? Because I have no information. I'm getting calls, texts, emails.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. But ultimately, none of those people had any real specific understanding, as I could see, about what the possible agreements are. I even said from the podium that it was kind of embarrassing that a group of private citizens, you know, first among them, Ms. Trish Melvin and Mr. Jim Atkins, have provided very important, detailed, source-based analysis of what these possible agreements could be. No one, not the mayor, and certainly nobody on the city council, seems to have any understanding of what those agreements would even entail.
I'm somebody who would be generally in favor of this MOU, but I'm not in favor of doing it with this lack of transparency. And then you're seeing it last night, Michael. I want you to talk a little bit more. You have citizens in Salisbury who are now thoroughly confused and outraged all at the same time, right?
And yeah, I was gonna say, and I think it does feed off of, yeah. So I think that there is an activity of like politicking, in which it doesn't matter whether somebody is red, blue, right, left.
Just a suggestion, I don't know if anyone's ever looked at this. Is it possible that we make ordinances available, like on the Salisbury website, for transparency and the public's input? Just because a lot of times, by the time you guys even see like this first reading, I remember there being a lot of chatter about that international property maintenance code. And it'd be really great if like, we could just review it. Again, maybe it's not accessible or easy to break down for everyone, but if it was just, you know, centralized city website able for us to review ordinances, then we, the people can have conversations with you, our representatives, about the topic. And then the other aspect is 287G. I think like the ordinances, if there is any kind of discussion, I think that in order for the public to have input, in order to have the full transparency and accountability of the police, than making these contracts available before, you know, before the public so that people can have something that they're bringing, rather than just, I'm worried about this outcome for people, which is legitimate and valid. But also, then people can easily dismiss it. Whereas if we have facts, if we have information as the public, then people can respond in a meaningful way. So I think with the ICE thing, we just need more transparency there as well.
I think the maneuver is whether it's coming from maybe the county exec and releasing information without there being documents to back it up, or whether it's the city council and rallying cries for, you know, a jurisdiction that's maybe not in question. The maneuver is to make people have an emotional response to these things, which then keeps them disempowered. If there's no actual evidence, if there's no document, if there's nothing for people to debate and make better, then everyone's left outside, actually, of the conversation.
Screaming at each other.
And yeah, and we're all just emotionally wound up. But are we getting anything for the community, for the public interest? Not at all.
I think we're getting something, but it's negative. It's negative effects because I think there are a lot of people that are, and some of them spoke last night. There are people that are legitimately scared because they've been given all different kinds of misinformation, or maybe just incomplete information. And they really think that an ICE agreement might be one thing, possibly the stuff of their nightmares, you know, because it does affect people that they might love and care about. And then they take that and can only go with what they know because they're hearing one thing from the executive, or some days, nothing. One thing from the county, one thing from the city, one thing from the mayor, sheriff.
I didn't come here to speak about 287G, but I will say that there's been a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding, and it all goes back to the county executive and the way she's played this card. And if you'll remember, about two weeks ago, there was on WBOC, something about Congressman Harris congratulates the county for having an MOU with ICE. Well, he fell into it too because of a press release that she put out. And I'm not going to speak pro or con 287G, but I do want to say, we're trying on the Open Agenda program to bring the facts to the public's attention, not arguing one way or the other.
The fact that we have expended so much energy and time on an issue in which we don't actually have an agreement speaks to this problem too.
What really keeps me up at night is we've already had our county executive admit that she did a bait and switch over budget issues.
Yeah.
I feel like, this is my opinion, that the landfill situation was, in some ways, a distraction, a bait and switch.
Yeah.
Now we're talking MOU. So if this is the last one and we can deal with it, fine. But I don't think this is it. I think we've got more to come.
This is the MO, not MOU, of the county executive in the sense of, like what I did there. This is what we kind of have seen time and again. And unfortunately, I completely concur, Joe. I think that this is just par for the course now. And I think she has decided to go this route because she thought it would be politically expedient, or at least it would be politically advantageous at this point as she's kind of in campaign mode.
I got one other one. She thought it was politically expedient to get behind what Tippin Creek State Park until it wasn't.
Correct.
And she's been backing away from that, pretty fiercely.
And here's the irony, right? We don't know if the state's going to pass legislation that will make anything that the local officials may or may not want to do null and void anyway. So I think, to your points, this is really about politics at its worst. It's the opposite of leadership. And more importantly, it's the opposite of actual concern, regardless of who your voters are.
I think Michael's point is really the best one. Folks out there need to understand that the far left and the far right are spending most of their time and energy just getting the rest of us whipped up into an emotional frenzy.
Very divisive.
And we're missing it.
Yep.
Mr. Bob Taylor's on the show often, actually has a terminology for it when the county executive does it. He calls it red meat. You know, it would be like taking one steak and throwing it into a pen with three tigers.
Yeah.
They're probably going to tear each other up before they even get the chance to eat the steak. And I think you saw that last night.
Absolutely.
All right. I want to talk about this Lot 10.
Yeah. So we see, I guess they're kind of two, there's a lot going on right now in the city. So we have that sub-recipient agreement with Mentis Capital Partners that people are still deliberating over. The core issue with the sub-recipient agreements are that we're, I think that the public is left to debate, oh, it could be this, it could be that. And then like the red meat thing, you have people fighting, well, how could you, basically, if you're against this particular deal, the maneuver often becomes, well, you're against development, or you're against affordable housing, or you're against providing housing for people. How could you be against something so good? And you demonize the opposition and you straw man their position, right? And it's like, but then nothing gets built from that, right? So if we go back to source materials, if we're talking about what is in the recipient agreement, sub-recipient agreement, then, you know, I feel like it's a meaningful dialogue. But now, if people are just, you know, who's against, you know, who's for criminals being on the street, who's against there being housing for people, who's against housing homeless people? Nobody. You know what I mean? These are all general things, but they're just so, they're general platitudes that people are, I guess, again, the red meat analogy, they're just fighting over nothing.
Well, let's start about, let's talk about this development potential on North Shoemaker Drive. Because I think that epitomizes this fight between development, non-development, growth, affordable housing. There's an area that's in the county right there, but they're asking to be annexed into the city, correct?
Correct. So currently with the county designation, it's R20. If they were annexed in to be developed, it's, you know, an agricultural thing. Right now, it's just a field, right? If that was annexed in and you didn't change anything about the city plan, then it would just go to R10.
Okay.
The developer requested R10S. R10 allows for single-family homes.
Which is what's already in that general vicinity, right?
Yes. What's next door is single-family homes and the development that's already there.
And that's within the city plan.
Which is the end of the city limits. And they would have to go back, they annexed in, they have to extend that system.
Okay.
So the people in the development currently on North Shoemaker Drive that I've had discussions with, their concern is to keep a kind of integrity of the area, you know, they deliberately live in the city and pay taxes while still benefiting from like a lower density than if they lived, say, in the commercial business district.
Sure.
In very layman's terms, explain the difference between 10S and 10A.
Sure, sure. So the R10A, so the 10 is 10,000 square foot minimum. The A allows for apartments and townhomes. The regular R10 that we have doesn't allow for apartments and townhomes, okay? The S allows for what's called cluster development, which you still have the same 10,000 square foot lot minimum, but it allows, it allows for you to take a piece of that 10,000 square foot and allocate it to open space, making the lot size that you actually build the home on smaller. So making it so that you can put the homes, kind of cluster them in a smaller area, and the rest of the space is reserved for open space. Basically became typically, it would just be the R10. The biggest distinction is single-family versus allowing townhouses and apartments. We'd recommend the single-family because that's what the neighboring community is.
Right.
The 10S, the S aspect is kind of a little scheme that exists in the code, like he was saying, to let them bunch together more. It was something we recommended as a way to give a little bit more density and more units.
Sure.
This particular parcel has a utility easement across it, overhead power lines that can't be built underneath. So allowing this special S clustering lets the developer in a prospective development, put the houses a little closer together. So they like that. So their concern is not, you know, they understand they have no, you know, say over what happens to this property and its development. However, the consistency in the property values, they have an investment in not seeing their property values go down, I think, is the main concern. So what the developer proposed, so they would like to see a single-family development if, you know, they get, they don't have any say in that. The developer is requesting to change it to R10S. What ended, what the last planning, joint planning, city planning and zoning commission voted on was the designation of R10A, which allows for cluster development. So basically, they want to build apartments, townhomes. The developer is saying it's 12 acres, as two acres are easement due to utility lines. So it's 10 acres they're building on, and they want to build 60 townhomes on 10 acres.
Okay.
That's a way higher density than what's currently there in place. They'd have to extend the city water sewer system out there to do service. It's going to cost a lot, going to be a lot of, the current problem that I find is that when the developer presented at the city planning and zoning commission was that these would be more affordable because they're townhomes.
Okay. You're talking like in the $260,000 to $280,000 range is what they're saying.
Correct. And like new single-family homes are like $400,000.
Okay.
So based on the market price. So compared to another apples and oranges, yes, this is more affordable. But in the sense of, will people here with a medium income of between 70 and like 80 something thousand dollars in Wycomico County, those people, are they going to be able to get mortgages for that price range?
And it seems like maybe the developer really wants to do it because twice as many homes at 80% of the cost is more profitable than building fewer homes.
We have a huge problem with people presenting themselves as business-friendly, who may not even be in a business here, you know, operating one or owning one.
Or doing math.
Yeah. And they seem to like to present it as, as the, you know, the developer presenting it as like, oh, we're doing you the solid by making affordable housing. And it's like, that's just the marketing to sell it. But why the developer or any business person is doing anything for their business?
For a profit motive, 100%.
It's their self-interest. It benefits them. And I'm not against that.
That's fine, too.
Yeah.
But don't present it for one thing when it's actually truly the other.
And as our public officials, I'm very against Michelle Gregory, Deshaun Doughty, and Angela Blakes propping up developers when they should be representing the public interest instead of these private development interests.
And it's, I'm glad you brought that up because I think all three of them, at a different point in last night's meeting, said that they want to hear a specific presentation from the developer on how this would aid and help with affordable housing. Well, of course, they'll give you a presentation, like, of course, they'll frame it any way they want to convince you. Like if you're, if you're saying, like, tell me, convince me in a presentation about how much you're going to help us. Like if that's, if that's the assignment.
Yeah, right.
That's not much of a baseline to work with.
I want to ask one other question. This goes back to something you presented on the show a few weeks ago. Would this development qualify for the here's home? Would they knock off the connection fees for this development? Do you know?
I'm not sure because I'm not, we're not, the process is maybe, maybe you would, the city, I guess, I guess city officials would be aware, maybe talking to the Department of Infrastructure and Development, like they have an idea of that whole process of permitting as it goes through. But we, the public, don't currently have, the media doesn't do that first.
When you did the math before, it did seem like there's this curve of, well, it sounds great that we're going to bring in development, but then there's this infrastructure that has to be paid for, capital improvements that are then left unfunded because they're waived.
I made that point last night again, that basically, as we, as we sign these agreements, as if we do a sub-recipient agreement for that Lot 10, then all the infrastructure, all the upgrades around it should be on that business.
Is the Lot 10, there's no firm plans and DID. Why would we allocate taxpayer money irresponsibly to a company that cannot provide planning or evidence of financing for any deal? Why would we allocate millions of state funds and taxpayer money to a company that can't even abide by the city's planning process?
They should be paying, because that's how they originally got built. Like railroads in this country got built by private companies, not by, not by Army Corps of Engineers. So in order to get certain things, certain infrastructure, like you need businesses either annexed in the city, paying taxes, so that they're contributing that way, or if they want to develop and make something new here, then this, it needs to, all the accommodations to make their development connect with our current existing systems and to bring it up to date and up to par, need to be put on the business. It's the cost of doing business.
But again, if you have elected officials that don't even know the basic business process, or what our own city laws are, that's a very disturbing place to be. I realize that the recent court ruling against the city regarding the restraining order for Lot 10 happened. But it's my understanding that the city is still in litigation on the lot issue itself. What we just witnessed, if I understand it, was the city council wanting to pass a resolution while the city is still in litigation. I realize there are certain people on the council who do just want to give Nick Simpson, Brett Gillis, and all their friends our tax money. I understand, that's your prerogative. But it seems that it doesn't really make a lot of logical sense to push a resolution when litigation is still happening. It actually delegitimizes this body further.
Closed work session, and I want to address that, and also the closed work session that's set for the later in the evening. Both of these have to do with lawsuits involving the city parking lots that have been sold for development. The one at 5:30 happens to be the three big lots, 111 and 15. And I want to say this, Mr. Shiel tried to keep this in an open session. Didn't go anywhere on that, unfortunately. Why is the council continuing to handle these things in secrecy? You didn't convene that closed session to confer with council. There is plenty of public information that's out there.
It's your job as the council to be transparent about issues that affect us, including our tax money. I realize there are always fears about if some developers will scold you behind the scenes, but you should work for the people, not just for certain corporations. And so on that note, I implore you to rethink in the future going into closed session when you don't legally have to. It's a bad look. It leaves the public with much, much concern and frankly, a lot of distrust. So please do better on that.
And then they're advising the public in their position that they should trust me. I know what's best. And this again, goes back to the, we're now discussing feelings. How could you be against affordable housing? And it's like, I'm not against affordable housing. Nobody's against affordable housing. But this isn't how you do it.
Yeah.
The process, like it's not.
It's also not very affordable.
People are often debating the why instead of how.
Yeah. Well, I want to, I want to bring Trish Melvin back in because I want to get a more perspective on her feelings that she, from that protest. She attended the protest and then she was at the city council meeting for the first part. So, all right. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much.
So stay with us. When we come back, we're going to bring in Trish Melvin and talk about the protests from last Monday night. Stay with us. We'll be right back. Welcome back to Open Agenda. It's Trish Melvin. Thanks for coming back in. Dr. Venosa, thanks for sticking around.
Always.
So it was great to get a chance to talk with Michael about the specifics of what was accomplished on the agenda. And, but then let's talk about what's not accomplished. There's still just no transparency. And Joe, you brought it up.
Yeah.
How does a group of elected officials still know less about what's going on than what folks like Trish has drummed up, right?
It is embarrassing, and it's no disrespect to you, but it's embarrassing that you, as a private citizen, can do such a great job in not only doing the research, but in explaining it in a clear, factual way, in terms of not just one ICE agreement, but, you know, the different possibilities. And elected officials, regardless of where they stand politically, don't seem to be able or willing to do that.
I mean, Trisha done the, you did the math at the county council meeting. You knew how many hours the sheriff's officers could work of overtime that would be compensated by ICE back to the county taxpayers. These are the conversations we should be having. I mean, the county executive has come out and said that we have a MOU. Now she said we don't. Now she's saying we're going to have a work session. It's not on the agenda as of now for the county council meeting on October 2nd, but it's likely to be. Should be, people be ready to show up at that meeting?
I think so. I mean, there's a lot of, I think there's a huge economic impact to the shore from this loss of immigrant workers. I mean, you're talking about hospitality. You're talking about construction.
It's harvest season, too.
And agriculture, for sure. And.
You asked a good question off camera earlier, and it got my brain thinking. You're like, do people just think that everyone with an accent is illegal? You hate that term, I know.
Yeah.
But I mean, we're not just talking about people who shouldn't be here who are scared. We're talking about people who, who are supposed to be here. They're legal. They might be different statuses, right?
Right. And that's why I, nothing is going to change in the near term as far as ICE federally.
Sure.
In the meantime, I would like to see people use words like undocumented instead of illegal and criminal. Because you're talking about people who, in the case of Haiti, people who have a protected status, you're talking about people who went to work in the morning in healthcare or in construction, and over the course of the day, some paperwork got signed up the road that made them undocumented.
Yeah. Because they were here legally.
They're here under temporary protect, which is a status that is linked to the ability to drive through motor vehicles, the ability to work through social security.
And you were saying that even for a benefit, they'll probably never receive.
Yes. When you sign up for TPS, you acknowledge that I'm going to pay into social security, Medicare, state and local taxes, although I may never receive these benefits. That's part of the deal.
Yep. And so it's interesting to me that when people are, at least are trying to explain, as several people did last night, saying, listen, I'm a citizen, I've been here 30 years, but I want you to understand, when these kind, not only when the rhetoric is used, but when these policies are initiated, it really creates the belief in our community that nobody is safe because we look wrong. And that's one thing that I think, whether you're on the light left or anywhere in between, people really need to listen to that particular concern. Because the citizens are saying, listen, we don't know what's going on, but this is what we're hearing, and we're scared. And if you're the public official, whether you're Julie Giordano, or Michelle Gregory, or anywhere in between that spectrum, you have a duty to the citizens to, A, confirm information in a detailed manner, and know it yourself.
Well, thank you both. Appreciate you coming out. Thanks for watching this episode of Open Agenda. We'll be back later this week with another new episode.
We oppose Julie Giordano. We oppose Julie Giordano.